I'm calling the meeting to order at seven oh one P M. Any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Yes, um, before we can move forward or anything, we need to elect the chair and a vice chair of the planning commission because those offices are vacant. And we can have discussion as to whatever we want to do, like the last meeting pro tempore and just do it for this meeting and this meeting alone with no additional responsibilities outside of this meeting. Or whether we want to do something longer term. We can change officer, but any time. We now have the authority to do that with our bylaws, but I'll look for input from others.
I move to do it on a permanent basis. And then if we need to change it, we can change it. And I nominate Eve as the chair and Jane as the vice chair.
Um, thank you for your vote of confidence. I, uh, this is my first meeting, and so I think I needs to climb until I can have a little bit more experience.
Well, there was no second without motion.
Okey dokey. Just figured I would get that out there. I, I'm not ready yet. I think I need to have a little more, uh.
I respect that. I thought you had, I, I, my vote of confidence was your structure. You have a lot of structure and.
Thank you.
I, I, I would like to, as we get to know each other, I wouldn't mind having another meeting or two or we have a temporary chair until we, this is our first time with a full board for, what, three months or so? Two, three months? So I, I, I would opt to do a, we don't have any pressing business come between now and next meeting. So I would, I would opt to do a temporary chair for this meeting.
I think for discussion purposes, we sort of ran into that between the last meeting and this meeting. If you have a temporary chair, you don't have any continuance between meeting to meeting. And when asked to take leadership, there was no leadership in between the meetings.
There is no.
That's my only concern with having a pro tempore.
I don't under, I don't see the need for the leadership where there, there is nothing to, there is nothing to report between, between the last meeting and this meeting. So.
I, I kind of agree because things are still up in the air, you know, about the next elections. And, um, since so, so many of us are new, except for Kevin, um, that, that maybe we should hold off and do a, uh, and I don't mind doing the agenda or if somebody else wants to do the agenda or tell me what to put on the agenda. Because that seemed to be the only thing that was needed, the leadership was to get the agenda done. Other than that, um.
Correct.
I think, uh, we could go for another month or two without, and then hold elections. And then we'll get to know each other better and, you know, see what happens with the select one elections.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of patience as well.
I, I could be fine with that, especially if you're linking the agenda. So we don't have a round robin of who's giving the agenda.
Right.
Makes sense.
So does somebody want to make a motion to change that? To have that, do we need a motion for that, Kevin?
Yes.
I guess, okay, it's so. I move to elect a pro tempore, uh, planning commission chair and vice chair.
I think that's going to be.
For tonight's meeting?
I'm sorry?
For tonight's.
For tonight's meeting.
Yeah, for clarification in the community, if, if, if we take this process, it'll be meeting to meeting and nothing in between. And then Jane is taking on the responsibility, I guess, I'm assuming, to do the agendas every month.
Well, I think like the last time we, we had input via email.
Yeah.
In terms of the agenda, so we were all on it, just like the email address, we're all on a level playing field with, uh, who sets the agenda and the input.
Thank you for bringing up the email, excuse me, Kevin. Thank you for bringing up the email and send it the next on the topic. Eve and I were not included on about four or five pages of emails beginning on January twenty seventh.
Okay, can we like do this first? We need a second and then, then we'll move to you.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
So.
So do we have an op, do we have a nomination for the chair?
But we need to vote on this motion.
Okay, so all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All opposed?
I, I don't agree with the temporary.
Okay, so.
Is that opposed for the record or abstentions?
Oh, that's opposed.
Okay. Okay, so, so motion passes for pro tempore, uh, vice chair and chair of the planning commission for this meeting and this meeting alone.
Okay. Okay.
So do we have a nomination for a chair of the planning commission for this meeting and this meeting alone?
Yeah, I'll nominate Mark Corbin.
I'll second.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you have it?
Stacy said yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And do I have a nomination for a vice chair for this meeting pro tempore at this meeting and this meeting alone? Or vice chair of the planning commission?
I'll nominate Stacy's vice chair.
I, I decline.
I would nominate Kevin, like the last meeting.
I second that.
Right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I'm.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So the motion is here, okay, um. Public comments related to tonight's agenda?
Could I say something about that, uh, email string? Just to clarify, I've been on email strings, um, a fair amount of my life and on government ones. And, um, I'm not sure if doing something like that, and this can be for discussion later. But if that means, uh, open meeting laws are met, right? Everybody communicating, communicating via emails. And that goes against any, um, thought of, uh, communication being our currency of doing work. So, uh, I just wanted to put that out there then. That is why I did not, uh, send my email.
Did not send your email to?
Yeah, well, the first option for Calista would have been to just use our old emails. I'm a little hesitant to be on a government type, um, email string. Whether it's federal, state, or local.
I think, I, I, I think as part of a commission in the public interest, you open yourself up to that. And if you, if you don't want to be part of that communication, then why are you on the commission?
That's a good question.
So Kevin, would you be open to, would you be open to if there are email correspondences that, that we within a certain amount of time leave you in via a phone call or via a paper copy, a hard copy? I mean, this, this is all.
Yeah, for the time being, for the time being, yes. I'll, I'll be on that for the time being, but I'm gonna look into the whole issue of, um, you know, freedoms in terms of, uh.
Correct.
Communication.
Mark, uh, Mark.
Just for open meeting law clarifications.
Yes.
If the forum of the board is on an email string, that's a meeting. So that has to be borne publicly.
Mm-hmm.
So generally, you know, boards restrict themselves to administrative matters for emails like, um, what are we gonna put on the agenda and when are we gonna meet and things like that? Rather than discussion of the substance of, you know, including something in your bylaws or not or something like that.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to.
Thank you.
Be clear.
That's my understanding. So when we discuss email, we can reference the September, the, the January seventeenth email that Stacy's referring to that is addressing policy and decisions that have to be made.
Well, and for clarification, I'd like to quote a couple of things in the email. I won't forward this email thread to them because I don't want to cause any contention. Two, I don't think we need a babysitter, so I don't agree with moving the P C meeting so that it's convenient for the select board to attend. And also remember that Calista is not our boss. And then in another email, it goes on to discuss whether our recommendation is Stacy or Holly Morse or someone else we need to determine. Have a look at Stacy's bio on his campaign website. And then it continues to talk about the zoning administrator and recommendations to take zoning administration to third party instead of Bob Allen, which is a select board decision, not a planning Z B A decision. So.
First of all, you're, you're entirely incorrect with that. The planning commission has made historically recommendations as to who they recommend is the zoning administrator. The select board may or may not, at their discretion, take that, take that suggestion.
It's a recommendation.
So that's absolutely, positively a recommendation. And I think that that has been a recommendation made in the past well before you and I and, uh, Eve and Jane at our K Monctus board.
Okay.
So that is a, so that is a, and, and, and the other question that I would ask is, where are you receiving these emails? Because maybe, maybe Kevin's, Kevin's concerns about some of communication for, via email and trust, et cetera, is, um, is duly noted.
Yeah, well, to answer your first question.
Usually with emails.
To answer your first question, Jane forwarded this email to Eve.
And I purposely forwarded, I knew what it was in it.
Right, right, and I, and I appreciate your conscience.
And I wrote those things about Calista's not on the law, you know, because it's the truth.
I really appreciate your conscience, Jane, because that says a bit about who you are. Is that you have the conscience to forward it to Eve and who were left out of the conversation.
No, we, no, you weren't left out.
Yes, we were. I have four pages of emails between Kevin, you, and Mark.
That's why. But Stacy, this is why I forwarded all to you. So that you wouldn't be left out of it, okay?
Because your conscience.
I know what I wrote in there when I, I didn't think I wrote anything disparaging. I thought I wrote what I felt and what was the truth. So, um, I, and I forwarded it to you because I didn't want you to be left out. So, uh.
And it's not the point that you forwarded it to us so we wouldn't be left out. It's the fact that it was transpiring behind the scenes, leaving us out.
It wasn't, okay, but it.
That's the point, and yes, it was.
No, Stacy.
It was the intention.
No, there was no, really no intention.
I'm not too fussed one way or another. If there's something important, please include me on it. If it's, uh, person, person, I, I really don't care that much, but I think we should move on with the agenda.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any public comments related to tonight's agenda?
I, I have a question about this one thing. So where are you guys not talking about planning commission business and purposely leaving, uh, Eve and Stacy out? Yes or no?
Nobody.
You're required to.
Nobody.
Yes or no?
Nobody purposely left anyone out.
No.
It was not them.
Okay, whether purposely done or not, were you talking about town business and leaving them out? Which you just read in detail.
Well, they just.
It's not the purpose or the one who included them.
It involved.
This seems a little shady, you guys, you know, what happened to the old P C?
And while.
I'll let you finish, I'll let you finish.
Thank you. Sounds like a word back to the old P C where there's a little gang and you guys are all having your little, you know, discussions behind closed doors. This is a public meeting and you are public servants for this town. And if you are gonna take the position, you need to include the entire P C commission. It's not right what you guys are doing.
Are there any other public comments related to tonight's agenda? The next is approve the minutes of January twenty twenty four meeting. Are there comments, amendments, edits to this? I have a few, but. Nobody else has any comments to make about the agenda?
The, the agenda or the minutes?
I'm sorry, the minutes, the minutes.
The minutes from January, I, the only suggestion as Shannon, you're taking on this responsibility hopefully, um, is when we're speaking about specifics, and I know we have the recording to go back to, but like, for example, changes to the minutes of December twenty twenty three. If there was some sort of an indentation highlighting to sort of, you know, one of the, the meetings we had on Saturday, the, the, the community meeting we had, um, one of the concerns was the part of the community cannot have access or does not have access or the wherewithal to go online and do these, these videos. So I think as they're getting the informer, our minutes should reflect a little more accurately what is being discussed in the, the actual meeting so that those people who may not have the ability to review the video.
Now, when you speak to the clarity of the information, are you speaking about the accuracy of the information as type or the clarity as it's viewed in formatting to make it more presentable to the reader?
Both.
Okay.
Yes. More inclusive of what's happening, the format, so it's easier to identify.
I'm gonna be, I'm highlighting and I'm telling, I'm breaking things down, so I.
Awesome. Well, you'll do wonderfully.
I was assume, well, when we get to discussing the secretary of position, we can discuss that in every detail.
Thank you.
So just as an aside, the P C minutes were not included in the last two informers. So I'm not sure what.
Right.
I haven't asked Calista that.
Um, Jane, thank you for all of the times that you have done the minutes and they've been great. Um, just one glaring omission is that there is nowhere at the beginning of the meeting that said that we conducted a pro tempore election of chair and vice chair. So that should be included. Um, that was a pretty significant part of how the meeting was able to be conducted. On the second page, it's just a, it's just like a syntax thing, like whether we say voted or votes, but maybe just keep it consistent. It just says Stacy votes for Holly, but Kevin voted, Mark voted. And then the last piece, um, Stacy wants to approve public comment throughout the meeting, not just saved for the end. I don't, we certainly did that at this meeting. I, I, I don't know if there was a notation about whether we approved that. I believe we were in agreement that we were going to allow public comment at the beginning according to the chair's discretion, but I, I, I don't recall.
Yeah, if it's on the task.
And it was per topic, exactly.
What do you mean per topic?
On top.
Per, per topic of what we're discussing currently in the meeting, not some random comment about things.
Something that is addressed on that night's agenda. Now we're getting a little more into the minutia. That I wasn't aware of, whether it's specific to the agenda or that was the agreement? Okay. So that might just be for, for public viewing, that might be helpful for them to understand.
So we have to motion to approve the minutes with the changes?
Are there any other changes that are being proposed to Monday agenda?
If not, I approve to, I motion to approve the minutes with the changes.
Yeah, let's check it out.
Okay.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm abstaining since I wasn't part of it.
That's fair. Uh, reports, uh, mail and email.
We jumped the gun on that one.
Does anyone else have anything else to add, mail or email?
So I just have a question. So there, there's an email that Calista is setting up for the planning commission and the Z B A. Will that come, people will send it to that group email and that gets forwarded to everybody automatically? Is that how that works?
I spoke to Calista about this because Mark had provided the email address P C at writing V T dot net and a password, and I tried to set it up in our computer and it would not set up. It aired. So I called Calista saying, am I missing something? Do I need an iPod or do I need, you know, what, what's going on with this? She's like, it's set up, um, Kathy and Mark initially set it up. And I don't know if you were involved.
No, they were set up for us because we were the two chairs. And that's something that we can discuss.
So how, how it works is, it's basically for the community or anyone interested in emailing the entire committee. So someone has a question about what's going on this coming month. They, instead of remembering or looking up five different emails, they can just do P C at writing V T dot net.
And that gets forwarded.
And it'll go to all of us.
Not necessar, no, not necessar, not necessarily, because, because when, uh, from, not necessarily. I think that we would have to set up within that account forwarding so that, um, that anything that goes to that email address, if you want it personally forwarded to your personal email address. If not, then we are all going to have to on our computers or via webmail or via your phone install the account.
No, it forwards directly to, I, Calista.
It does not, it doesn't, as of right now, it doesn't forward. When something comes to the P C, I don't automatically get it. Calista, all of Calista's emails.
Okay, I, I can take it offline, that's, that's all right. I'll, I'll stop just for the topic.
Ask, ask Calista, she knows the ins and outs of it.
Great.
But it's not for us to communicate with one another.
Okay, so in terms of mail and email, the other thing that I, uh, would like to discuss in terms of that is, first of all, a, a, a significant portion of it is for official business. So once we do have, whether we have an, we have had a hearing and we have some sort of official response to it or we need to reach out to somebody else that we are using that email address with all of our agreement on it, because it's from all of us as a board in terms of a decision. So I don't know if we want to look at having that email account for just the chair of the planning commission and the chair of the Z B A or whether or not everybody needs access to it. I, I, I'm a little less concerned about access to all of the content coming in. I'm a little more concerned about using it to send emails out without everyone's, uh, being on the same page.
I don't believe you can send emails from P C at writing V T dot net.
Of course you can. I sent everyone an email as a test and only two people were back. But, uh, you might need to check your spam, but I sent it out to everyone. When I sent everybody, you, you, you just referenced that you got a username and a password for me that was sent from the P C account. So, um, you can very much send emails with it.
Did I answer that?
No.
Sorry.
That's okay, I, you, you, you have your position on emails, so I wasn't expecting it. Is there anything else on mail or email? Uh, regional planning commission, um, we do have Kathy Rondo on Zoom. Are you here to speak on an update?
Yes, I have a report.
Thanks, Kathy.
Um, so we have a new, um, employee. Her name is Christine Edgerton. And I'm gonna read a brief description of her stuff from the VAPDA newsletter. And it says she will provide technical assistance to town committees that are working on housing plans and solutions. She's going to develop a webpage with housing navigation resources, including funding options, promote a January twenty twenty four regional housing study conducted with G I S analysis and with input from housing providers um, that identify suitable locations for housing development in portions of the region served by the infrastructure. Some of the, uh, things that, uh, we're looking at is, um, um, funding sources for housing. Some of the, uh, member towns, uh, specifically Chester, um, has formed a specific housing commission using the ideas from the Keys to the Valley studies. Um, there is a, a housing study project that Mark is working with, um, through a consulting group um, to make models for possible housing sites in, uh, areas that are most suitable. Um, and those would be the ones that have water and sewerage lines. Areas that could possibly be more densely populated, uh, than they are now. And this, of course, all revolves around zoning stuff. Um, there are areas that would not be, um, desirable and those would be ones in flood zones and river corridors. The Windsor has a housing project, uh, and the town of Windsor donated land. However, there's gonna be about a million dollars for a remediation. And part of that was led to a discussion about Vermont laws and the Act two fifty laws and that some of the Vermont things are, uh, more strict than the E P A laws. There is presently some small, um, match money for towns to develop bike and pedestrian paths. Uh, there's a lot of discussion about Act two fifty reforms and also reforms relating to village centers. There is a hot bill that is in the legislature right now that's, uh, six twenty nine H B. And it revolves and concerns the tax sales of property by towns. Um, let's see, there was a, a great enormous, uh, reduction in funding for paving and repaving. However, on the other side, there is money that has been, uh, made available for E, E V charging stations. There was also a big discussion on certification for town assessors and listeners. And the concern is whatever the town has, uh, right now, it looks like if you have, um, assessors, it's going to be approximately six years for them to complete the courses to become certified. Uh, the winter twenty twenty four newsletter for Mark is out. If anyone's interested, go to the web light, uh, website and it's online. And that was interesting. We did not have one in the fall because there was a, um, what do you call it, a virus that affected the whole system. And we had a lot of trouble with a lot of the, um, computer stuff. There is a new transportation planner who will be starting shortly. His name is Logan Nichol. He's from Ludbo. He is presently serving in the Vermont Legislature. Um, but he will be full time at Mark when his current term ends. And that's all the news.
Sounds like a lot of work to be done.
Kathy, I have a question about the tax sales. Is the, i- i- is the, is the point of that, that if, if properties do go for tax sale, that the town absorbs those properties and then they're to be used for affordable housing or some sort of community purpose?
She's muted.
I'm, uh, you have to unmute yourself, Kathy.
Oh, that would be one of the things that sounds ridiculous, Kathy.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments for Kathy? Thanks, Kathy. Uh, next, the energy board report, Kevin?
Yeah, I'll try to make this brief. Um, the energy board is continuing with weatherization projects. There's going to be one in the village here soon, we hope. Um, there's of course a, a vote coming up for the solar array. And, uh, the members have done a really, uh, standout job in pushing all the numbers as far as cost. There is, uh, uh, frequently asked questions that has gone out and I don't know if all of you have seen it about the, uh, who will be able to, will you be able to see the, um, features from the road of the solar array? Um, a lot of the financial impact to the town and so forth. So if you haven't seen those, please, uh, look for those, um, in the, I think there should be in the informer, if not, they're posted out here. On March second, of course, that's the town meeting, uh, informational meeting. And there will be people there to answer further questions about the solar array. I would say also that this town hall here. I would say also that this town hall here itself has been, had an energy audit done. And we're hoping to get results from that, um, to improve the efficiency of this so that we're not pumping electricity down there for no reason.
When did they do that audit, Kevin?
Oh, about a month and a half ago, so.
When do you think we'll hear back?
Someone was saying March.
Oh, soon, that's good.
We should be here soon.
Soon? Yeah, you know more than I do about it. Yeah. Please correct me if I'm wrong on any of this information.
Definitely let you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Brian Callie, who is a member, has been going to a number of, uh, web seminars on energy and, uh, ways to improve our, um, energy plan, so to speak. Let's see what else, um. Yeah, that's about it. Oh, we did, uh, use, um, the Merc funds to purchase a camera, an infrared camera, to go to households and shoot everybody. Anyhow, that's the end of my report, Mark.
Um, Kevin, is there concern that the solar arrays going to be visible? Is that, is there a concern about that?
Oh, you know, that was just off the cuff, uh, frequently asked questions. Um, s- some people are concerned that it would be visible, but hopefully we'll have a plan where possibly, um, there can be a bee pollinator, uh, planting underneath the solar array. We haven't gotten that far because why plan if nothing is passed? So there's, there's a number of ideas. Uh, the other question is about the trees and how they will be used or how much that will cost, which by the way is zero now.
But the hedgerow is not going to be cut all the way against 44. There is still going to be.
Well, the fire department has jurisdiction over a lot of those trees and, uh, the fire chief has requested that a lot of those trees come out and they are a, a hindrance to any, uh, electrical lines should we get a, uh, an ice storm.
Okay.
That was just real heavy.
It's mostly pine, white pine, isn't it?
Um, there's a white pine row, but those pines along the road are, are red pine, are Norwegian pine, which aren't very marketable unless they're 10 inches and straight up. But I haven't idea how to use those, but I won't go into that. Anyhow, um, any other questions?
Thanks Kevin.
Yeah.
Um, zoning administrator, I spoke to Bob Allen last Friday and he wasn't able to attend this meeting. Um, he said that he didn't have any, uh, he didn't have anything to report for this meeting. Um, ZBA report, um, during that same call that I had with, um, Bob Allen, we spoke a little bit about the Hall, uh, Art Foundation hearing, which we, I think, do we, we have, we have a, so you got planning for March. Um, we can have a discussion either now or about that. Um, uh, Bob says he doesn't believe that there's any problem doing a site visit and planning for the hearing in the spring, later in the spring when we actually can walk around, do a site, proper site visit, perhaps see what happens with the snow melt and the flooding, um, now that the berm's and the flood valve have already been constructed. He said he hasn't heard anything from the halls since or pushing for a hearing, uh, immediately. Does anyone have any comments, questions about that? So originally I thought maybe it was a little more pressing, but in thinking that we really ought to do a site visit and from some of the past, it seems, hearings for the, you know, the ZBA, there haven't been site visits that probably shouldn't have, should have been done to clarify things. I think we ought to do site visits moving forward. And I also think that that, just in, in keeping, sorry, Martin, keeping with the bylaw modernization grants, I think we need to find a time to do that at another time and, um, and perhaps schedule a hearing in addition to our monthly meeting commitment to get this worked on. But that's a different conversation.
There could easily be desktop, uh, surveys, Kevin, that we share photos, pictures, really, you know, beef up what we've been trying to do for three years is, um, a, a system where a zoning administrator, you probably have this in your office, the zoning administrator, does a fairly rigorous job of what is required, um, in terms of restrictions, in terms of, you know, getting a zoning board informed of what is actually proposed or what the goals of the owner, ownership, uh, is. Those type of things. So, you know, we could bring that back on the table, um, for discussion, so, yeah.
Okay. Um, the other thing, um, I, uh, have sent an email to a couple back and forth with, uh, Jason Resmussen in terms of the remark, uh, using their services or zoning administrator. Um, uh, we need to sort of get a sense on our end from the town and from Bob Allen as to what is the weekly, monthly, yearly commitment. Um, in his email, to me, um, they do have the bandwidth for probably a small town like Reading based on our needs, although last year we had 21 permits issued, according to the website. And, um, I understand that the fees, the hourly fees for a zoning administrator through Mark is somewhere between 60 and 110 dollars an hour. So in order to cover those fees, we might need to, um, we might need to increase our permit application fees. That's something that could be, could be considered. Um, some, some, some permits are relatively straightforward and probably would only need a half hour or maybe an hour max. Some might need more. Um, but, um, in order to pay for it, if, 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 he was saying that the average is around $200 or so for a zoning administrator per permit, that would, that would cost Reading about $4,000 a year for, for zoning administrator.
Yeah, we, we could talk about that later, don't you think?
What, what's it cost now?
It's true. I, I believe it's probably pro bono. It's pretty interesting. It's been working for what, 68 years of employment? Now you wanna hire somebody? It seems kind of ridiculous. Okay, we're, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we're not gonna have public comment on this, on this particular topic. Shut the public up, I got it. You don't like what you have to say, what you have to acquire. Gotcha. You have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to, to discuss that. Um, and also, um, for Calista, you can look on the website. I did not have time, I just got this today. But both Plymouth and Cavendish have, uh, Plymouth has a warm meeting for tomorrow, uh, their draft of their town plan. It's on their website. I'm not going to make copies of this. Um, uh, but as a neighbor in town, we have access to this information. It's a lot to go through. And then the other is from Cavendish, a notice of public hearing about, um, incorporating their enhanced energy chapter into their town plan. And that is a much shorter, 17-page document, but I just got that today. So if anyone wants to grab the hard copy to review, I'm happy to.
I'll take that.
Do you feel like that, Kevin? Any questions about, I have, there's nothing to say. I don't know anything to say there. Um, okay. Um, thank you for all the reports. Uh, Kevin, thank you. To previous Planning Commission members, you wanted to incorporate that tonight.
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, pretty good management style to, uh, thank people for their service. And somehow, maybe just talk for a couple minutes about how to recognize especially Steve Straight and Gene and Kurt and Kathy.
Well, Kurt and Kathy have been recently.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, any ideas? Or just, is this good enough, just a public thank you?
I think, uh, Kurt, Kathy, if you're out there, we really appreciate everything that you did and we hope that we can, uh, live up to your expectations and we hope we can carry on the torch. That's, I'll speak for me on that.
Yeah, okay, good enough. Move on to the next item then.
Um, introduction of new PC board members to the community. That's, uh, Eve and Jane.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I think I introduced myself pretty well, uh, in the nomination and election process, but I'm happy to be working on this. I think it's really important for the town of Reading. I think the town of Reading could, um, really benefit from thoughtful planning and, uh, appropriate development and I hope that we can make that happen.
Welcoming, thanks. And Jane?
I, I agree with everything that you've said.
Right. Now we're moving. Okay, um, recommend nomination to the select board. As everyone is aware, Stacy's term that he filled, that was Gene's term that Gene filled for Ken Cox, expires March 2024, next month. So, is there discussion in terms of recommendations?
I, I think we should, uh, let the public know that there's one person that is needed to fill Stacy's unless Stacy intends to stay on.
I do intend to stay on.
And so you would be a candidate for, after your March term, it ends?
Right, I'm a candidate for select board.
Okay.
What, no, no, we're.
We're talking about PC.
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying.
Oh, I, I, actually.
You did say.
No, I'm so, I'm sorry, this must be a typo. This is, no, no, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. I guess we were confused. This is recommendation, the nomination for a PC's ZBA member to the select board. So the, the, our, our board will go to.
And, and you want a recommendation instead of me?
We're discussing, we're discussing that.
Of all the people that are running.
Who else is running?
Well, there's you, there's Lisa Sylvest, we.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
We're in a home page.
We're not talking about select board.
No, this, okay, this was on the agenda that don't we make a recommendation to the select board of who we would like to be on the select board?
No.
Correct.
Oh, wait a minute.
No.
And select board.
No, 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 I, I, I'm sorry, you're, no.
No, select board.
No, 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 this isn't, no, this is not an endorsement. It's, it's.
Wait.
It's, it's, no, it's not a, i- i- it's, it's, it's not an endorsement. We are making, as the Planning Commission ZBA.
Just the Planning Commission.
We are making a recommendation to the select board of who our board wants to serve the next term, which is up March 2024, which is Stacy's term.
Okay, so the Planning Commission doesn't make a recommendation of the people running for the select board.
No, no, no.
I understand that, that's what I thought because we made recommendations for the solar thing, for all these things. So I thought that that's what, when you said the SB that we make a recommendation. So we're making a recommendation for whoever is, wants to apply because Stacy's position is up. I got that.
Correct.
Right.
So, so since, since you brought it up, I, I do have a question because you are running for, you're running for the select board. So in the event that you are elected to the, the select board, we will have a vacancy, but you're going.
If I, if I am appointed again to the, this Planning Commission and I'm elected as a select board member, I can, I can hand, I can manage both positions. And my, my theory, my philosophy, my outlook on this is I will relinquish that position on this commission if I am elected thankfully to the select board to someone who may be interested in the seat.
Relinquish, that's, that's, it's, it's not a pass off. It's, it needs to be, it needs to be an appointment.
Let's say Jane Doe comes along and she's very interested in being on the Planning Commission. I could resign, allowing her a vacancy to take the position.
I don't think that that's based on our recommendations. Eve, do you want to try a minute?
Well, I just have a question. So the term that you're in now expires in March?
Yeah, because I, I was, I sort of filled a hole, so to speak. You know, it was a vacancy.
Should I, again, I'm not sure what the, uh, institutional history is on this. Should this be something that is notified in the, um, Front Porch Forum or the Reading Informer to say there's a select, uh, Planning Commission opening?
I believe it has already been announced that my term is up in March. Yes, I believe so.
I, there, I haven't seen anything formally written. In fact, just as I was navigating our clunky charging website, there is now blank pages of elected officials and appointed officials. So it used to be, you used to be able to see Gene Goldsborough. It, what, you, your name hadn't even been updated. That was June, June, Jane, uh, excuse me, Gene Goldsborough. Term ends March 2024. And that's the, and that's the term that Stacy filled after her resignation. So, and that's another, that's another thing that we'll have to discuss in terms of, there, there are great areas in terms of, your, Eve and Jane's, uh, term. So, so I guess.
Mark?
I, I, has, just one other question, Kevin. Has there ever been a precedent, precedence, excuse me, where somebody served on the select board and the Planning Commission ZBA? Where they served both?
I've never heard of that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't.
Martha?
I haven't heard of that.
Mark?
They, they, I don't have them all in my head, but there are lists of incompatible offices that, and you, you know, you can inquire with Vermont News or, or with, or with Mark.
We do. We do. I, I, I have been in touch with BLCT and I.
Do you have that correspondence that you can share with us?
I do. Um, it's all on the link. But I can, um, the only warning is, they said, yes, I can serve on both. The only warning is I need to be very conscientious about conflict of interest. So if there's a, an agenda item on the Planning Commission that could conflict with being a select board member, then I need to make the decision which one I'm going to be in or out of. And that was in their, their stern recommend, or their stern warning, if you will, was just be very careful how you manage the two roles. But yeah, it is possible and there is precedence. I don't know if there's precedence in Reading, but there, there is precedence in the state.
Well, I, I, I can't seem to download the informer right now. Um, I, I feel like for the positions that, uh, Jane and I just filled, there was a fair bit of interest. I don't know if it's worth, um, putting an opening up position out more publicly so that people who are interested have an opportunity to apply again or if that's not necessary. But I, I note that we sat here in the room with a couple of people who were all interested. So if it hasn't been publicized, we should do that. And if it has been and no one's interested, then what?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with, uh, publicizing, uh, openings on the Planning ZBA board.
Okay. Uh, and too, I don't think, I think we, do we need to make a motion for this? Or can we, can we just?
You can make it an action item and get, get the word out.
Does someone want to, uh, submit this to, um, we've missed the deadline for the February Reading informer, but there is, we did put it on Front Porch Forum as well and that's where we got the interest. Is somebody willing, be willing to do that?
Not me.
That's okay, Kevin. Eve, Jane, Stacy?
Say it again, I'm just, I'm.
Would somebody be willing to take on, to advertise, to make the public aware that there is uh a term that's expiring in March 2024 on the PC's EBA? And if there is interest, then uh as a board, we can, uh, we can do what we did before where we.
Do the process again?
We do the process again.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll do it.
Thanks, Jane.
Thank you, Jane, thank you. Okay, we're almost there, Martha. Um, discussion of new recording secretary, um. I, the notes that I had, I didn't, I didn't know that, um, and I'm sorry, can you, is it Shannon? How do you pronounce your first name?
It's pronounced Shanann.
Shanann?
The easiest way to remember it is to think of shenanigans.
Shenanigans, okay, we can do that, but not at this meeting, there's not the. Um, so just the other, the notes that I had is, oh, I thought we were gonna advertise in front porch forum, and I thought maybe we would be sharing the responsibilities for it until we um hired somebody. Um, we did for the budget, which hasn't been voted on for the town, we did approve a sixty dollar a meeting moving forward, paying mass, what are you paid mass with?
It's sixty five now.
It, it's sixty five now, so, hmm, okay.
As of, I think there was no family.
So the minutes, maybe there, maybe somebody should.
Well, I think it's as of when the budget passes, it changes to sixty five.
Oh, we're increasing it five, okay, so it's currently sixty dollars, which is what I was looking at at our last minute.
Yeah.
So we're, we're increasing it to sixty five, okay?
I have, I was approached and, and informed that it was, I had um expressed interest in being more active in the town, um, however, not being a newland native, the structure of government here is very different from what I was used to. Um, so this might be a good um way to familiarize myself with the procedures and commit myself to being here. Um, so I am happy to, to do this, like I said, I spoke with Jane, and she said she would kind of do a little handholding here over the next few months and make sure her little uh transition is smooth in terms of the structure and what I'm going to use to.
Okay. And just from an official standpoint, Jane, you're going to be the one looking at the, the minutes that are recorded, and you're gonna be submitting them, so they're still under your, your uh tutelage.
Okay, fine, I, I just don't know if I can get paid and be a member of the planning commission at the same time.
No, so I think.
But that doesn't, yeah, right, that's why I won't.
There's probably, there's probably flexibility there, but, okay.
If, I don't, I mean, if, if, if it's more fair to put out a call to the community? I mean, if due diligence needs to be done, I, I.
I just thought we were going to, I didn't know that it was all, it's set in stone, so, does anyone else wanna weigh in?
Yeah, if, if you don't get paid, Shanann, you tell me, I'll get Jane.
Jane, Jane and I, we have, we have a, we have a bond over here.
So, we're just sort of updating as like probation period, that you can, you can take it or leave it as.
It's a mentorship.
It's a mentorship.
Yeah, I, I feel like we're doing a, a, I don't know, three month apprenticeship trial period, and I think, again, through the course of sort of the election cycle, and making sure seeing where all of the things, all of the balls in the air land and, um, and then, you know, what will, what will that be, February, March, April, things will be set and move forward and make sure, like you said, the group is on, there is positive that I can.
Okay, very great.
Well, if you're worried about other people wanting the job?
I'm not.
I took the job because in the informer, I saw needed life or death situation, recording secretary. So that's why I am.
Okay, great.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
So I'm in favor with us moving forward as is until the situation presents itself that we need to look at different options, talk about that.
Okay.
Okay? All right, um, so since it's not an appoint, like, do we have to make a motion to appoint?
I.
Shannon, Shanann, excuse me?
It's okay.
Do we want to do that?
Uh, I will.
Or do you wanna just do a probationary period for right now?
I will uh not make a motion.
Okay, well, let's just, let's just maintain this as, as good as for right now.
Good to go.
All right, unfinished business, let's get, let's get, let's get rolling with this. Uh, review changes made to the bylaws to this date, um, Martha sent us all options for remaining grant funded by law work, she has the master document with our pieces, um. The only thing that I'll, the only thing that I will um plan to just, just say is I think that we really need to probably be a little more diligent in terms of doing reading, doing the homework. So when we come to the meetings, we, we already have an idea of what our position is, and it's not reading through the material and a lot of back and forth. Let's try to be a little more efficient and thoughtful and do some homework to play catch up.
And in furthering that thought, I, I think a systematic approach, as I was reviewing a lot of the, the document that you've sent over, and it seems like we've been jumping around a lot, I mean, we go from page two, three, four to page twenty five, and I'm not sure what that agenda was, but if, if we can just take a systematic approach to it and go page by page by page, then I think it'll be a lot easier for all of us to move forward, digest material, move, move on.
So my thought was, uh, one thing we were supposed to do with this grant was to just do an overview of the bylaw modernization grant concepts. Um, and we haven't really done that formally yet, so um I put together um some slides to just go over bylaw modernization, just to go over the home act, and then at the end, um, summarize what you've done so far and some other things from those various documents, concepts, statutes that you may wanna consider doing going forward. Um, whether that's page by page, I mean, I guess that's kind of up to you. Um, we can look at, when we get to the end, that's where those lists are, what you've done and what you might still wanna do, and whether there's certain that are higher priorities, may, maybe not in page order, I don't know. I mean, we, we can talk about that.
An overview would be great, why not start with you and address those questions after?
So I need to share my screen, and my only concern at the moment is my battery's half gone, so I don't know. Um, I do have a power cord, but I don't see anywhere to plug it in.
You have a battery?
We could find something here on section four.
Does my computer charge?
We'll go as far as we can.
Sounds good. Oops. Okay, so Reading got a bylaw modernization grant roughly a year ago, and um there are certain, let me jump ahead. Got this annoying bar across my screen. What is a bylaw modernization grant for? It's for updating your bylaws to increase housing choice, to support pedestrian oriented development, and to do those things consistent with Vermont's smart growth principles. We probably all have ideas about what smart growth is, but Vermont has specifically designed, um, defined it in statute, so I'm gonna take a, a short detour onto what is smart growth. Um, smart growth will maintain the historic development pattern. It will include mixed use centers at an appropriate scale for the community. So while six story buildings might be appropriate in Burlington, they're obviously not appropriate in Reading, and it allows for flexibility. Enables choice in modes of transportation, protects environmental, natural, and historic features. Strengthens agricultural and forestry industries. And one thing you do need to do is check your bylaws for consistency with current existing agricultural and forestry provisions, there are some things that are currently missing. Uh, support a diversity of viable businesses. One thing that we discussed recently was performance standards, and that's one way that you can um help regulate the impacts of business uses rather than trying to anticipate every type of business that someone might wanna do, and how much space it might take up, and, you know, various other parameters that you might want to think about. Um, if you focus on performance standards, which has to do with like noise and emissions and things like that, then you're just looking at the impact rather than trying to say specifically what type of business someone can or can't have. So that would be one way to support a diversity of viable businesses. Um, I highlighted provide housing that meets the needs of diverse social and income groups because that is the primary focus of the bylaw modernization grant. And the last slide on um the smart growth principles is that they should reflect a settlement pattern that is not characterized by scattered development, development that limits transportation options, fragmented farm and forest lands, uh, linear development along well traveled roads. I think one of the meetings we talked about, just expanding the village up one oh six, up and down one oh six to enable more development, but, I mean, that's something that would be contrary to the smart growth principles. It's more to focus on infill, keep, yeah, keep, keep everything within a walkable village if you can. And then I skipped over one, number four, um, it's a double negative. Um, settlement patterns that are not characterized by development that is not served by municipal infrastructure. So, that's, that's the way it's worded in the statute, not, not my choice, but. Oh, and back on farming.
Can you give us an example of where we're lacking in terms of strengthening agriculture and forestry? You mentioned that we don't have, and I probably have large districts of forestry.
Right, 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 so they're just technically within the bylaws, like, for example, the state, and I'll get to this, but there's certain sections of the uh state statutes, forty four, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen that cover a lot of key provisions that you need to have in your bylaws. One of those is uh forestry operations, and um so there was no definition for that. Some of the definitions have changed for things like farming and farming structures and things like that. So it's nothing real drastic, but, you know, just to look it all over and make sure that it's all consistent with the current um statute.
And that's part of what you do for us, Martha, is you, you suggest that language to sort of align us with the state.
Right, yeah. And then one thing that the state has, um, I think fairly recently authorized is um accessory on farm businesses is what they call it, they enable that, they enable towns to consider um whether you want to have a site plan review for that sort of thing, like, you know, if someone wants to.
Make a restaurant?
Restaurant?
No.
Create a big farm store?
A farm, yeah, farm store or canning produce that you, you know, grew on the farm or something like that. So it's something you might wanna consider if you want to.
I'll, I'd be interested in knowing what that means.
So back, back from that little detour to smart growth principles and to enabling better places. So when the state put out, put together this bylaw modernization grant program, they also put out this enabling better places, and everyone was provided with a link to it online. This has a lot of guidance on things that you can do, some easier, some more difficult to enable housing within your town, and it varies based on, you know, the size of the town and everything, what's, what you might wanna consider appropriate. I didn't just, I didn't look at everything that was really more oriented towards large urban areas or areas that have municipal water and sewer, because they just wouldn't apply in Reading, so. Um, but in here, what they consider are things like dimensional standards, parking, allowable uses, street standards, accessory dwelling units, and your development review process. These are all areas where you could potentially make changes to make housing a little easier.
Where'd you say that link was? That you said there's an.
Um, I forwarded an email to everybody, I think you did get it, if, if not, let me know.
But that's called enabling better places, and it's what agency is it for, just so we can look through?
Yes. Boy, it's, there's a whole lot of them on the back.
Okay, but it's, it's, it's.
And I can resend the link if.
Yeah, I don't think you've had Eve on that, that email.
Yeah, I've gotten like fifty emails in the last five days, uh, and they've been forwarded from a bunch of folks. So maybe just, if you could send that out one more time to all of us, or our new thing is set up, that'd be great, that'll help me up front, so, thank you.
And Eve also asked before the start of the meeting if the grant application that was submitted for this is available, and it is, so I can send that out to everybody as well.
That'd be great, it might be helpful to read what we're, while we send what we do. And who submitted that? Mouse got any original?
Yes, yeah. Uh, I don't know if I jumped ahead, yes. So dimensional standards, things like setbacks, frontage, building height, coverage, lot size and density. They encourage towns to align their standards with what's there. So you're not going into a village that has a bunch of quarter acre lots and then requiring a minimum lot size of an acre, because that instantly makes all of those lots nonconforming. And so, that's, that's just the guidance to, to look at, you know, what's there for all of those different criteria. Reading's, I did kind of a desktop review of Reading's, um, and they're pretty good already. I mean, they're not excessive, I didn't get the impression that they were excessive. Set, um, front, side, rear setbacks all seem pretty reasonable, and lot size. One thing that you could consider. This is illustrating the difference between lot size and density. Right now, you do have a lot size standard, so this is, you know, one acre, and if your, if your minimum lot size is a quarter acre, then you'd have to divide that lot up into perfect little squares where everyone's a quarter of an acre. If it was a, if it was a, if it was a density standard, then you could do something more like what's on the right, where you got the same number of units, but several of them have smaller lots. And smaller lots are generally more affordable than larger lots, so. That's something to also consider. Parking, this booklet encourages you to consider one parking space for each dwelling unit, to look at maybe putting parking behind the building or setback from the facade, um, to allow shared parking and to allow on-street parking. Now, the home act came along and made the first one mandatory in areas that have public water and sewer. So you don't have public water and sewer, but you did already change your parking section to require one, so. So what you, the, the maximum you can require not having water and sewers, one point five. But you've already gone beyond that, which is great. So then the question, I guess, in terms of these bylaw modernization concepts is, do you want to consider requiring that parking be behind the buildings? Do you want to consider allowing for shared parking? I don't know that on-street parking is really an option in Redding. So allowable uses, you've got your lists in all the districts. They have the list of permitted uses and conditional uses. You can think about whether some of those conditional uses could become permitted uses and just be reviewed by the zoning administrator rather than going to a public hearing. If you wanted to consider new housing types that you don't currently have listed in either public, you know, permitted or conditional, you know, one option to consider might be senior housing. You could also consider cottage courts as a way to cluster more densely. And then another option that some towns have done for like historic barns, and this would bring it, could bring it out of the village a little, is to allow historic barns to be redeveloped as multi-unit dwellings, assuming of course, they've got all the wastewater and everything to do that.
I'm sorry, I mean, what are cottage courts?
Kind of like a, just a, well, there's one on 131 past in New York Cavendish or I think it's New York Cavendish.
Across the river.
It's just a small, yeah.
It's like a cul-de-sac, exactly.
Just like a small, yeah.
An association.
A small cluster of houses. Kind of like that, kind of like the, something you could do if you had a density standard, maybe, where you could cluster those, the four houses on smaller lots. This does have street standards. You don't have a lot of, I mean, you've got access and roads and some stuff in here mainly to do with subdivision. So that's probably where you could make a few changes. There's a, there's a list that the state provides. It's a checklist for complete streets, and they also have a residential lot pattern checklist. Things like, that are on the complete streets are like, do you want to require streets that are no longer than, no wider than ten or eleven feet or something like that? Do you want to require bearing your utilities? I mean, in some cases, some of these recommendations would probably increase costs. I don't know.
Tremendously.
Yeah. But, you know.
We're supposed to be talking about affordable housing.
Right, right.
But it works for, they're ready for dense areas.
Right, but it's one of the things that in their list of requirements, they say, you know, look at complete streets, so. Accessory dwelling units. So this first provision allow the owner of the property to occupy either the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling. That's in your draft regulations, ADU regulations, which you're still discussing, so, but that's in there. Increase the allowable size and minimize the parking requirements. Those are two things that you've, well, you've already increased the allowable size. You already allow the ADU to be forty percent the size of the single-family home or a thousand feet, whichever is larger.
But we didn't increase that. It's just, it's more generous than what the state.
The state requires that it be thirty percent or nine hundred square feet, but your existing regulations are already more generous than that, so. So you're in pretty good shape there. And then the development review process, as with, you know, I mentioned with the uses, just are there some things that currently require conditional use that could require administrative review? Another thought is to allow the ZA to reduce the setback requirements by ten percent in specific situations. You know, maybe there's a topographical reason why they can't meet that front setback by two or three feet.
Versus twenty, like twenty-five is a setback, so maybe twenty feet if, if something.
I think that, yeah, just, just a small amount of an adjustment.
Right, not zero allowance.
And de minimis, impact, you know.
Right.
So that you don't have to then turn around and go try and get a variance or go to the development review board for something small.
Makes sense.
You could also, if Bob were interested, if Bob is the ZA, to conduct site plan review. That would be a way to maybe streamline the permitting process. It would depend on how clear and unambiguous your site plan review standards are. So that was bylaw modernization and mostly reference from here. Then last summer, the state passed the Home Act and made some of the things in here required. So the Home Act had things in it about funding for housing, study committees, temporary changes to Act 250 to facilitate housing, but I'm going to focus mostly on the bylaw The Home Act, almost all the provisions in the Home Act became effective last July 1st. The only exception to that is the parking. Those requirements go into effect on December 1st of this year. Two-unit dwellings or duplexes. So this, the regulations are a little confusing. The Home Act is a little confusing when it comes to duplexes. Duplexes have to be an allowed use with the same dimensional standards as a single-unit dwelling. Some people question, what does allowed mean? Is that allowed as a permitted use or allowed as conditional use? Can you still do conditional use review? And the initial guidance that I heard was they intended to make it a permitted use. And then on ACCD's website, under their frequently asked questions, they said it can be interpreted to allow, you know, to, to, you can still do conditional use review for a duplex if you so choose. I suspect maybe that they just worded it vaguely by accident, and there's more housing bills coming up this year, and that may get changed or clarified. So I don't know that I would do something about, about it right now. Right now, you moved it to permitted use in all the districts, and maybe just put a bookmark in there and revisit it after this session to see whether they clarified that at all. And even if they didn't clarify it, the purpose of this grant and these changes is to facilitate housing. So I know there was some discussion about whether you wanted to make it a permitted use or not. It would certainly facilitate housing if you kept it as a permitted use. And in most instances, there's really, it's not a huge impact. So it may be one of those situations where it's excessive development review process to require conditional use for, for a duplex. But again, I'd say just put a bookmark there and revisit that in June. You have already changed the, the definition of duplex to match what they have, what the state's definition is. Multi-unit dwellings. So this first provision, bylaws shall designate appropriate districts and reasonable regulations for multi-unit dwellings. That's not new. That was already there. Towns have to allow multi-unit dwellings somewhere, even if there's no water and sewer. I mean, there has to be onsite water and sewer, but even if there's no public water and sewer. And Redding currently allows them in the RR5 district and the Village districts. So if there is no public water and sewer, you can require a conditional use, which is what you currently do. And you have already adjusted your definition, multi-unit dwelling. This is the definition. In red is changes that you made. I mean, they're not substantive. I don't think that it would run into any issues with what the state's definition is. You just added the distinct unit attached or detached that is clearly subordinate to a single-family dwelling. And then under B, the total living space of the unit does not exceed forty percent of the total living space of a single-family dwelling or a thousand square feet. So as I said earlier, you're more generous and you're allowed to be more generous, and you've just chosen the term total living space rather than habitable floor area. So, and I, I don't see any issue with that. The state doesn't define habitable floor area, and you do define total living space, so.
Good listeners.
And, well, that was the backup in the definition. If it can't be determined, then you go with the listeners part. So exists, existing statutory language says that, except in flood hazard areas, no bylaw shall have the effect of excluding as a permitted use one accessory dwelling unit that is located within or pertinent to a single-family dwelling on an owner-occupied lot. That was the existing language prior to the Home Act, and the state does not define owner-occupied, which has been one of the sticking points in these discussions so far.
Is this another bookmark?
Yes, you all decided after much discussion to revisit this after the legislative session because it's very likely that there'll be more changes. This was a new change, and all, all they did was change made a shell. A bylaw shall require a single-family dwelling with an ADU to be subject to the same review dimensional or other controls as required for a single-family dwelling without an ADU. Just one word. And this is new language. The criteria for converting an existing detached, non-residential building, for example, a garage, to an ADU shall not be more restrictive than the criteria for a single-family dwelling without an ADU. I did simplify this language a little bit, but I didn't change the meaning. And this has been added also to your draft language that you'll get back to in June. So an owner-occupied, single-family residence with an ADU is not considered a public building unless the ADU is rented out. And then, you know, with any, whenever anything is rented out, it's, it's got to meet fire safety codes, whether it's short-term or long-term rental. Parking, again, this is one of.
Sorry, I'm sorry. And that's the state, that's the state's wording, public building is, is.
Public building is included in the Home Act. And it specifically says that if a home has an ADU and the ADU is rented out, it's a public building. We talked about parking before. It's in, both in the Home Act and in the recommendations in here. And you're already doing what they suggest even more than, going beyond what they suggest. Hotels shall not prohibit or penalize a hotel from renting rooms through, a bylaw shall not prohibit or penalize a hotel from renting rooms through the Vermont General Assistance Program. Does, I don't think Redding has any hotels, is that, okay. So there's no provision for hotels in your bylaws, so that was one reason why I thought maybe you don't have any. You do have B&Bs and Inns, and I'm, just as an aside, I'm noting that they have no size restrictions. So it's another thing that you may want to revisit at some point.
When you say B&Bs have no size restrictions, does that mean you can have a B&amp;B in an accessory dwelling or two accessory dwellings in the home itself? Or you say we have to revisit that?
Well, you, I'm just saying it's not really very well-defined right now.
Okay.
So like, if you wanted to have, you know, if you had a big enough building, I guess, and you wanted to have twenty of them, there's nothing that would limit that.
Except just being like static and water.
Right, right, right.
So already you're going to just compliance.
Right, exactly.
And anything that large would also fall under Act 250.
Right.
Is there a recommendation for a size indication though?
It's just a little unusual, I, that there isn't any, you know. A lot of times I'll see regulations that say, you know, a B&amp;B can have up to eight rooms, or, you know, and an inn can have up to, you know, twenty, twenty-four or something like that.
Yeah, once you get above three rooms, you're, you're under state control, right?
In your regulations, it says under three, or three and under is a permitted use.
Yeah.
And more than that is a conditional use.
Which means fire, water, sewer, injection, everything.
The limitations on bylaws, so there's a list of things that you can regulate, but only in certain ways. And the Home Act added emergency shelters to that list. And you've already done that. You've already put that in your bylaws. And you've also already adopted the definition of emergency shelter, so. Interested persons are people who can participate in a public hearing. The only change here is the ten people who can be considered interested persons, they added residents. So if you're a resident, but you're not a property owner, you're not a voter, you can still be one of the ten people who's an interested person.
That's clever.
For projects that include affordable housing, the ZA's decision may not be appealed based on the character of the area. If the zoning board determines that a residential development will not result in an undue adverse impact on the character of the area, that determination by the ZBA cannot be appealed if the development is in a designated downtown, rural center, or neighborhood development area. I don't think it includes village centers, at least for now. So right now, I don't think that applies to Redding.
Is this, is this, have there been any like precedents so far for the, this seems like this is a lot of, it gives the ZA a lot of, a lot of power here.
Well, this is all in the Home Act, so, and so it's, there's not, it hasn't come up a lot that I'm aware of since it was just passed in July. I mean, I'm sure it has come up in some towns, but, and with the Home Act, you know, it's not optional, you know. It's the state. It's the state saying this is how it's gonna be. But like I said, I don't think it applies to village centers. There is some language that passed in 2020 that said that a three or four-unit dwelling cannot be denied due to an undue adverse effect on the character of the area. We haven't talked about that yet, I did put some draft language into Section 5.2.1. But again, I mean, that's a, that's a state law, so, not, there's not a lot of legal room there. For ZBA decisions that involve housing development, you can't require a larger lot size, more parking, you know, a smaller building height, less density, or otherwise disallow a development to abide by the minimum or maximum applicable standards. So with this, I think that you may need to tweak your conditional use review. And, I mean, it may be as simple as adding the word non-residential in, in a spot where you're not specific right now. And there are, there's room for exceptions, for example, you know, there's a federal permit requirement, or, well, federal, local, or state permit requirement or ordinance, or there's a nondiscretionary standard, like you have to be this far from a wetland or something like that. And the only way that you can do that is to adjust one of these things. You can, you just have to put it in writing and you have to say, you know, we can't stick with this and here's why, so. Minor subdivisions, the Home Act enables this, you don't have to do it, but you are, you can allow the zoning administrator to approve minor subdivisions as you define them, you know, I'm seeing some smaller towns define them as two-lot subdivisions. And I thought there was interest in doing that and allowing, Bob.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Dan, some communities are in-
Uh, for, you can define minor subdivision. If you want to allow your zoning administrator to approve them, you can define them. Small, some smaller communities are defining them as a two-lot subdivision.
If it meets the criteria of our current subdivision, it's simple, you know, not encroaching on any conditions, then he would be able to-
Right, you'd have to add some standards and say which, you know.
Right.
So-
But we, uh, that's, that's not necessarily, we don't have to, we don't have to-
It's enabled legislation, so you don't have to do it.
Got it.
You can do it.
Okay.
And, and it was my understanding that there was some interest in it, so.
Okay.
So at the end of the, most of you are new, but Kevin probably remembers at the end of a bylaw revision, you have to produce a report that describes, you know, the changes that you made and things like that. And as a result of the Home Act, you also now have to say how your revisions conform with 24 VSA, 4412, 4413, and 4414. That's, you know, I started to go through that somewhat, those, as they apply to your bylaws. That's where I picked up on the forestry operations thing. So there are some things that you may want to do related to that. Also, after the select board adopts the bylaws, the planning commission has to prepare an adoption report. That's a new requirement that didn't exist before. And now, all bylaws are adopted by the select board unless they opt to put it to the town in, you know, at a, for an Australian ballot vote at a town meeting or a special town meeting. But the default position is that the select board approves them. This is kind of random, but for class four roads, if you sell property on a class four road or a legal trail, you have to disclose to the buyer that the town is not required to maintain the road or the trail.
The realtors know all this?
They don't know?
They should, they better. And Martha, these reports, I think you mentioned, what, three reports that we need to do at the end? Two of them, you'll, you'll help draft those, or do, is it on us to draft those?
Yes, I've, I've been helping towns draft those. I haven't done an adoption report yet, I don't know if that's just sort of a tweak the original report a little bit or not. They haven't really put out guidance about it yet, as far as I know. So hopefully that's not too onerous. So the last few slides are revisions that you've already made. You've already exempted home occupations, provided they comply with the standards that you have in your bylaws. You've made duplexes a permitted use in RC25, that should say RR10, not RR1, and RR5. And we discussed earlier, you can have some further discussions about that. You revised your RR10 purpose statement. You decreased the minimum lot size per dwelling unit in Feltzville from .5 acres to .25 acres. You revised your parking section, you added wastewater section. You revised the definition of accessory dwelling unit, but you're still talking about the standards. You have revised both the home occupation and the home business standards. You've incorporated those limitations on bylaws that, you know, they now include emergency shelters.
I'm not sure, I'm starting from, I'm not sure we, we finished revise home occupation and home business standards.
You may not have-
That was part of the performance standards, and I think we were going to review in terms of like noise, odor-
Right, I thought you kind of got into a, well, close to an end point, maybe not an end point. And then we're gonna talk about performance standards.
Okay, okay.
And then you revised a bunch of these definitions. Duplex, multi-unit, emergency shelter, parking space, loading space, nursery, and total living space. As far as what you may want to consider going forward, we talked about allowing the ZA to approve two-lot subdivisions. This one, I don't know if we've discussed, but it's, it comes up. If a parcel is divided by a public road, there are some instances where towns specifically say that creates two separate lots.
Right.
And some don't say anything, which is interpreted to mean that it doesn't create two separate lots. Unless you specifically say one way or the other that it does or it doesn't, it can be legally problematic, so.
You don't think that one have a-
I don't think you do.
I don't, I don't think we-
Uh, there was an instance where land was in a family and they wanted to get a certain amount of land to an individual and the topic of a road going through the land was discussed and it was that situation where there were actually two lots because of the road.
And there's, there's a technical element to that, because I think it just came up with the property on Bailey's Mills, the old, the Bailey's Mills and B and B, they did a subdivision and the road separated the remaining lot. And I don't think it technically made a separate lot, but it, it still fell under the same folio number, is that correct? There was a technicality to it.
How long ago was that?
Oh, just a few months ago, just a few months ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's stand by the, by the stream there, um, that piece, um.
But I thought it was all between, that was all between Bailey's Mills and town road.
I thought it was just a technical lot.
Yeah, but the remaining lot was split by the town road. And the same thing sort of happened with the Anderson subdivision as well. Spear Cemetery split.
That one did.
Yeah, but it didn't create two separate lots, they were both under the same folio, but there's a technicality with it being split by, and I'm not quite sure what, I don't remember what the technicality is, but there is one.
It also came up in the Allen property on Bailey Mills. They subdivided that part that is across the street. I don't know what the fine decision was, but it came up as an issue.
That's recent too, well, that's not too recent.
Couple of years ago.
Just last year?
Mm-hmm.
It's just good to be one way or the other. Does it, does it create separate lots or does it not create separate lots? Because the ambiguity can get you in trouble.
Trouble.
Well, just a comment on that. If you, if you go on a use value for your forestry programs, they will tell you that if you have twenty-five acres on one side, or no, say you have fifteen acres on one side and ten on another, and there's a town road that goes through it, you have two lots that are not eligible because it has to be-
Twenty-seven.
Yeah. So these people who have roads going through their property, I don't know if they have a lot, but-
I mean, it can be beneficial in that where you might not be able to have two lots otherwise against two lots, which is why it could be beneficial for housing that you can-
Yeah, okay, well, we'll, uh-
...
We'll have to visit that.
Yeah, this is for future discussion. I mentioned already, just reviewing the bylaws for consistency with the current Ag and Forestry standards and considering adding accessory on-farm businesses. You could also consider the adaptive reuse of historic buildings if you would like to put language in for that. As I recall, your small lot language might need some clarifying, I don't remember the details. I, I think your bylaws currently address the residential building energy or commercial building energy standard requirements at all, and it would be good to include some language about that in there because anything that's heated or cooled has to meet those standards. It's a state law, so it's not something, well, it can get enforced locally depending on whether or not you require certificates of occupancy. And as far as I can tell, you only require them in a flood zone. But one way to check and see about whether building energy requirements have been met is to require certificates of occupancy for all occupied buildings. So there's new recovery residence language, I believe it's under the group home section of the statute, and so we'll have to add that. Not really optional. You have a definition for small business, which is very, very broad and there's no standards, so I just, that struck me as something that might be on address. Same, I mentioned already, there's no size limitation for Inns and B and Bs. Uh, we started to talk about performance standards, or, well, I sent out some examples anyway because we were talking about them under home occupation and home business. So, but we haven't really gotten beyond me to one, some, some examples from other towns. The minor changes to conditional use that was related to the conditions that DRBs or zoning boards are not allowed to put on residential development. You can still put some of those requirements on commercial development. And then last but not least, I don't know about Reading, but I think most of the towns in the area a year or two ago received a letter from the state saying, towns, please adopt regulations with regard to helicopter landing zones. Because if you don't and someone wants to put one in, we've got nothing to go on about what the town wants.
This came up, Ray, you may have been on a meeting where this came up as far as, you know, addressing that very question, also landing scripts.
It was for an ordinance to create an ordinance to drive it.
Yeah, there was a question of should it be an ordinance or something that is so... That's something we have to consider.
Something that, yeah, so, so this was just your list of things that you might want to consider? In terms of planning to go forward from here, we have, we have twelve months. If you get through these, you have your public hearing, you pass the regulations along to the select board and then have their public hearing. If they adopt them prior to January 31st next year, then your match is forgiven. So this grant is, I think roughly fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen hundred?
Ten, fifteen-
Fifteen thousand and we're responsible for fifteen, ten percent, okay.
Right, so the ten percent match could be waived if these bylaws are adopted by the select board.
So Martha, excuse me, can you go over that basic timeline for us all? So it needs to be done by the end of January?
They need to be adopted.
So then we need to get it to the select board by October, November?
It depends on whether they're willing to have a special meeting or not, or whatever their regular meeting date is, then you'd have to back off of there because there's a fifteen-day recording requirement for the hearing notice. And it often takes, if you have a weekly paper or something, it may take a week to get it into the paper. So you just have to back it up from where you think the select board would be considering it. And that's assuming they love it as is and don't want to make any changes.
Yeah.
Which is rare, so.
So we should build at least, I would think, sixty days in there, at least?
I mean, I haven't seen a town meet that yet, you know.
Fifteen hundred bucks.
You're all, you're all passing the bill.
There might be, if you're not seeing town meeting, maybe there's gonna be some sort of extension hearing.
There's no, there won't be an extension for the match, I mean, you do have to finish the work by then. So maybe you, let's say you don't finish your work on it in time to get through all those hearings, but you still have to finish that by January 31st, 2025.
Okay.
Gives us a good goal.
My battery is running low, so I just close it, but it's still up there. But I, so I can stop sharing the screen.
And would you, and would you, would you be willing to email us these slides just as backup?
Yeah, that would be great. So that one looks like an action item slide.
Can anybody tell, you see the B, can anybody tell who that is?
Brian Callie.
Oh, that's Brian, okay.
Um, so Martha, going forward, like-
Eight.
Right. Martha, going forward, can you just give us a sense of like, without putting you on the spot, like some sort of homework assignment or something that we can go through and maybe kick the ground running from next meeting? As to what aspect that we should be focusing on? Also thinking, maybe the new members need to go through some of the things that we, maybe there's a little extra burden on you to go through some of the things that we've adopted. And if you are having some objections, then specifically bring those up and then we'll revisit those sections. Things like the parking, I think are probably pretty, pretty easy.
Well, I'll step up to that Ag and Forestry issue and maybe, maybe even stop and talk to you about it at your office. Is that all right?
Uh, it's okay with me, I don't know about your group's guidelines.
Oh, okay, well.
It's okay with me if you want to talk to Martha and I'll go through it.
It's also okay with me, you have experience with forestry, so.
Let's be efficient. If you want to do that, go ahead.
I typically work tomorrow, but we can chat or do whatever, or we'll figure something out.
Okay, alright. That's my board.
Okay.
I had sent that, the performance standards.
Yes, yes.
So I, I would love some-
And we've never discussed that as a form of order, so.
Right, so I can make sure everyone has those and we could talk about them, what you like or don't like about the examples that I gave you, and then we can go from there on that. I kind of feel like there's, there's a lot to try and squeeze, especially if you want to try and get the, get through the whole hearing process. Was there anything that jumped out that you, like, you definitely do want- Was there anything that jumped out that you, like, you definitely do want to enable the ZA to approve two lot subdivisions and you'd like to see some language on that? Or unfortunately, my battery died, so I can't hold the, hold the list up.
New development review process, is that something that was bookmarked?
Just to try to look at your uses, are any of those conditional uses things that you could move to permitted uses, maybe? I think maybe looking at Ag and Forestry, maybe if we look at Ag and Forestry and we look at performance standards, that'd be a good start. And I'll bring like a, maybe a rough schedule to the next meeting and, you know, you can tweak that, move things around. This is more important, or we don't want to look at that.
That's a great idea.
Does anyone else have anything for Martha?
That was really helpful, thank you.
Yeah, very.
In the document, just, I mean, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to review, but this, this draft document that Martha sent over is very helpful too. I mean, with all of her comments and what we've discussed, what we haven't discussed.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Moving on with the final few pieces of the agenda, plan for the March PC meeting. We can meet here in the town hall on the first Monday. Due to Election Day setup, we obviously can't use this on Election Day itself, on that Tuesday, uh, fifth. We do need to touch base with Okemo Valley TV and see what their availability is. But I'm proposing that maybe we meet that Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday of that week. We do need to make by that time a recommendation to the select board, and their meeting is the following week, Monday, the eleventh. And then just one piece, I won't be able to be here in person that week, but I'll be on Zoom, so. Are there any days that aren't working for people or days if Patrick needs to look at his schedule? As long as you're avoiding town meeting days.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not an option.
Oh, yeah, Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Wednesday, Thursday, Kevin?
Well, since there's quite a bit of work to do, would anybody be opposed to meeting later in this month?
I don't know that.
The only, the only, the only issue is that if we're, if we're making a, if we're making a recommendation of a membership of the planning commission to the select board, then it will be effective April, which, why possibly that?
That could work, I, I.
Yeah.
I would try to, try to keep it that week, that first week.
But would anybody be opposed to meeting two times a month to get this done?
The, the only issue I think is gonna be from Okemo Valley TV in the open meeting, unless one of us like get training in terms of doing, uh, doing video and being in this space. I, I don't think I can commit to being in person twice a week, uh, twice a month rather, but.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And maybe the suggestion would be as we wind down, if we find ourselves off track or delayed, we could speed up the process and have more meetings closer to.
That's the president.
Maybe in the future, let's, let's get started and see what we do in a time or two.
Okay, so let's look at, let's look.
Thursday the seventh is not possible for me.
Not so.
I would say the sixth is, but Thursday the seventh is not.
Okay, Wednesday is possible for me.
Works for me.
Kevin?
The sixth?
Wednesday the sixth here at the town hall.
Okay.
Okay, so our next meeting is Wednesday the sixth at seven PM here. Also. Do you, is it an emergency? Do you need to, do you think? Okay. Okay, um, other business. Kevin, I, did you sort out the terms? You were going to maybe look into seeing, cause both Eve and Jane's terms according to what was on the town website, now it's blank, that both of theirs expire in twenty twenty-five, and you seem to think that usually the terms are staggered, and even though they are somewhat staggered.
Yeah.
Were, were there actually two terms that started at the same time?
Well, if they both, if they both started at the same time, then.
We, there was a suggestion, I thought maybe last meeting.
Yeah, I didn't do that, I didn't do much homework on that, but I think that.
So you don't recall, so something, we need to figure, we need to figure that out in terms of, for the sake of planning.
Yeah.
Okay. So, somebody want to?
Somebody might have to have two or three.
Go into the archives or. We have to go back to, we have to go back to, I guess, twenty twenty in terms of who was, who was appointed that time. Shouldn't be hard to go back to.
Yeah, it'd be in the town report.
Here, I'll do it, I'll do it. So I'll go, I'll go into the, I have to return the key tomorrow, so. I'm gonna, I will go into Kalista, she has the actual hard copy, so I'll go back and I'll find those terms. And record that. In the past, we had a schedule as to after so many months, who could open up the town hall. We could set maybe a schedule for the next maybe three months and then revisit that. I was going to be able to open next month when it was on Monday, but I can't now, because I won't be here. So would anybody be willing to open up the office?
On the sixth?
For the, for the seventh, next, next month, March seventh.
March sixth.
Six, six.
I'm sorry, March sixth, that's seven, yeah, thank you. You guys really need to get here at six fifteen, so Okemo Valley TV can set up the appointment.
Six thirty, you should know. Half hour is probably fine.
Okay. Rebecca was here.
We just said six fifteen, so.
Rebecca was here at six, uh, six fifteen.
I mean, that would be our deal, but we can make it happen.
Okay.
So, and, and just to review, this just involves getting the key and opening up and closing up. And closing.
And returning it.
I, I can do it, that's fine.
Okay, all right, so we have Eve for next month, and for the.
So pick up the key from the town clerk.
For the town clerk, yes.
Earlier in the day.
And it's really easy, open it, she'll show you how to do a hex key to make it open and then lock it.
No problem.
Um, and for the sake of time, shall we just maybe next meeting discuss what the next, who wants to open up April and so on and so forth?
Yeah.
Jane says, yes, great. Okay, um, um, at some point, we, we can discuss, there, there was some confusion, but Okemo Valley TV would like to maybe start to look at doing, maybe hosting on their accounts, just because sometimes there are times where you need a double authentication piece that Kalista doesn't share with us. And also I understand that there are some security issues of people coming in and bombing meetings and doing obscene things. So we might need to provide, I don't know if Patrick wants to, provide a, it's generally an extra step where you register.
Oh, registration link.
Registration link.
Well, there's a couple of things. One is, I mean, optimally, we like to not have to post your, you know, visible links on our, on our account. Makes sense that you would host them if you had one on Zoom account, which you do, which is great. But because there's that security layer, like sometimes when, um, it's happened several times where we've had to actually get in, it's been an authentication, I have to get into the email, I don't have access to the email. During select board meetings, it's easy because Kalista's your G P O for the email. It happened once, we're, we're kind of got held up at the beginning, because you're gonna contract Kalista down, and so it's like, for that reason, I think if we hosted, we'd have access to our own email, that, to things. That, that would help avoid that kind of issue. Then there's the issue with just the security, just in general. You don't want to be posting open meeting links on your agenda, because it has happened. If it happened, that means that they're present or they have been Zoom bombed. So I mean, any layer of security you can have, Zoom recommends using a registration link. But the question is that I think you can still access the meeting any which way, if you have a registration link, but there's an extra layer where the people need to register if they're gonna join in advance. And the one hitch there is that they require an email address. So even though anybody can call in, you still have to have an email address to register.
Okay. Okay.
Or provide an email address.
Okay. So Ray, may I put you on the spot, do you have an email address?
No.
Sometimes you call, you call in, so would you, you would be able to follow that? Okay, okay, all right, understood. We have a, we have a handful of call-ins, so that's, that's helpful, that you can still call in, but as long as you have an email address to do the.
Yeah, that's like the most secure, and the next thing I could recommend is just including the meeting ID and the passcode, if you're gonna post that publicly, but making sure to be able to wait in the room. I would be hesitant about waiting, because right now, this is not an optimal situation where I'm basically managing your Zoom, so there's like a lot of traffic and I don't, like, I, I can't do that. Plus, I'm displaying everything on the screen, so I can, you know, so, but that's probably not the best option, but if you're not gonna do a registration link, then we can figure it out.
Okay.
At least have a waiting room.
Or, or if one of us is willing to manage the waiting room, like we have, we're on the computer right now?
Sure, yeah, but if you're engaged, and that's probably not practical for you, if you're engaged in conversation.
Sure, okay. Okay.
So if there's, you know, I mean, if there was somebody assigned to that role who was a volunteer or somebody on staff or somebody.
Or the reporting secretary, maybe?
But she's taking, you know, it's a big turn.
I was gonna say, I feel like there is a potential with secretary to be able to manage some of these things and just to know if you're.
I think it's too soon to, yeah.
Right, it's not like it's, it's, it's not easy, because it's a lot of people, and so it's like,
part of the issue is that, and maybe you've had this in the past, you've recorded minutes, you don't know who's who. So what a registration link is gonna do is it, it forces somebody to put in their full name, first and last name, so you don't see a cryptic screen name or a phone number, there are any of that kind of thing. And then if there are, if you do a waiting room, you could ask people to enter the full name before you allow them in. So that would be a solid backbone. But, and there are some meetings where there's a lot of activity, and there's other ones where there isn't any tonight, so.
Okay.
I just don't want to commit ourselves to managing a big waiting room, because that could, that could get a little, I.
I understand. I understand. But it looks like there might be some further discussion, but we might be able to protect ourselves. Remember in the future, it's going to be a crazy world. Oh, okay. Does anyone else have any other?
And outside of that one issue, with that one night, we really haven't had any issues, have we?
Um, did you get some bots?
No, we haven't had, we, but just that one second authentication night.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just thinking ahead, and also I could have brought this up, because there have been some security vulnerabilities at meetings, and I just, uh, wanted to get ahead of this. So you can just.
No, I need to discuss this.
Okay.
The Walldorf Foundation thing, number ten, was scheduling the.
Yes, sorry. Yeah, I, I, I think I brought that up, I should, I should have revisited. Um, as of, as of now, I, if, if, if the halls are not, are not pressing us and/or Bob or the town, in terms of us coming together and aboard. John Brooker Campbell, who was the flood plain manager, he's now the, he's now the administrator of department. So from what I, when I spoke to Bob, there, there is a shuffle that's going to happen in the state. So essentially, we don't have, there's not going to be an expert flood plain manager that's going to speak at that hearing that was involved in the process. And it sounds like as of now, there isn't somebody who has been brought up to speed in all of that. And I've, I've, I've been a part of just some correspondence and there's a lot of, there's a lot of cooks in the picture on this one, different state agencies, um. So I would at least revisit it next meeting and see where we are. And maybe April or May would be a good time to schedule it based on weather conditions.
Okay.
Any other issue?
No, okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
Have a good night. One more?
Thank you very much.